Good morning, calling to order the July 1st, 2019 school committee meeting. It is 8:00 a.m. The meeting is called to order. This meeting is also being audio and videotaped. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to roll call. Start to my right.
Kathy Salati, recording superintendent.
Pamela, assistant superintendent of the business.
Ann Smella, Rochella.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Rich Ficero.
Gregory Thompson.
Sarah Trulio.
Bill Fonseca.
Our first item is the reorganization of the school committee. I now turn to my right and superintendent Gordon Smith.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ficero. At this time, I will take nominations, motions to nominate for a chairperson for the next school year.
I nominate Mr. Gregory Thompson to be chair of the school committee for the upcoming school year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And are you, Mr. Thompson, interested in accepting?
Sure.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Then we'll do a roll call vote. I'll start over to my left. Mr. Fonseca?
Yes.
Mr. Trulio?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, yes, sure.
Okay. Mr. Ficero?
Yes.
Mr. Ficero?
Yes.
Okay. That's five zero. Mr. Thompson, congratulations, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Now I'll turn the meeting over to you.
I'll take that. Or that. You want to take that one?
Either one. Yeah. I was just doing initials so I could keep up.
Oh, okay. You want to keep up with it then?
Sure.
Thank you. Great. Just to acknowledge, Mr. Ficero, thank you for a great year of leadership.
Thank you.
Well done. A lot accomplished this year. And, Miss Rochella, welcome aboard. Nice to see you here today.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now take nominations for the vice chair of the school committee. You want to do it?
I'll nominate Ms. Sarah Trulio for vice chair of the school committee for the upcoming school year.
Nomination has been made of second.
I second that.
Thank you. Second has been made. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Fonseca?
Yes.
Mrs. Trulio?
Yes.
Mrs. Rochella?
Yes.
Mr. Ficero?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson, yes. Okay. Welcome aboard as well.
Thank you.
No minutes today. Committee and subcommittee.
No, no, one more.
Secretary.
Oh, yeah, secretary.
I'll nominate Gordon Smith as secretary. There you go. Okay. And I'll second. I'll second Mr. Thompson. Roll call, Mr. Ficero.
Yes.
Mrs. Rochella.
Yes.
Miss Trulio.
Yes.
And Mr. Fonseca.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson, yes. Hope I didn't throw you there. Kathy.
No, I'm good.
I know you're. Okay. Now we'll move on.
Okay. Good work.
Committee and subcommittee communications, if we have any today. Ms. Fonseca?
No. Sarah?
No. Rich? No. Mrs. Rochella? Nothing today?
Neither do I.
Okay. See?
Just mentioned for the Fourth of July parade.
Yes. Coming up soon?
Coming up soon.
Okay. We will move on then to our discussion about 7.2 ELPS, optional Chromebook insurance program for students. Miss Trulio?
Do you want to do reorganization? Subcommittees first?
Oh, yeah. Can you tell I'm rusty?
I was thinking that was a reorganization, but you're doing some things. Yep.
So, in your packet, you have a look at the subcommittees that were in existence for the last school year. And we've highlighted where Ms. Margen Voucher was engaged in different subcommittees and activities. And you also can see where all of you have worked in subcommittees and different activities. So, I don't know if we want to start just with the warrant review?
Who wants to do that this year?
Well, we usually.
It's on the tip of Sarah's tongue, Leonard.
I could stay on it. I don't mind being one of two people.
We should bestow that on the newest member of the school.
Yeah, traditionally, that's.
It's usually the highest honor we can give at this time.
Okay.
Well, it's what you learn. It's actually learning.
It's very helpful.
It's once a week. You come in and review all the invoices that have been paid and then just sign off of it. And then two others sign off. Two others of us sign off on it, too. And if you can't make it, you usually have a backup. We usually have two on it.
So Kathy will send an email when it's ready.
Right.
And we all just chime in.
And then we can certainly cover if, for either one of you can't do it. We can certainly, somebody else can do it, too. So, you're in?
All right.
Okay. That's one. What else?
Then we go to athletic and the athletic subcommittee, I guess that is. Student athletic activity.
Well, is everybody comfortable with what they have now? Or does anybody want to switch? Let's ask those questions.
So that was Mr. Fonseca and Mr. Ficero.
Did you want to switch? Anything you have? Do you want to switch anything you have? Do you want to switch anything?
I'm agreeing.
Okay. So let's just deal with the red ones.
Okay. So.
Beth.
MASC backup delegate, alternate delegate.
Are you going this year? We already called. We appointed you and we appointed Rich as the backup.
He was the delegate, right?
Yep.
Got it. ELEAF liaison.
That's a tough one.
Let's leave it for now.
What's ELEAF?
It just says educational endowment.
Oh. So that requires attendance at their meetings, or usually once a month, and some other work.
Organizational work, probably around fundraising and so forth. ELEAF is the educational endowment. And what they do is each year they try to provide mini-grants to all the teachers that are, anybody who's interested in putting in for a mini-grant.
I can do it.
Keep saying yes.
I know.
We've got the collaborative board of directors.
The corporation. That meets four to five times a year.
Yep.
Over in West Springfield.
And that's different than the board of director?
Yeah. Because I used to be able to do both, but I can't because they, there's a conflict of interest.
And those are nighttime meetings?
Those are nighttime meetings.
Okay.
Six o'clock on a Wednesday, usually the third Wednesday of every, of the month when they, when it's necessary that they meet. The board of directors meets monthly.
Okay.
And I would just reelect the chair of the board of directors.
You've got to stay, yeah.
So I want to stay that, with that one. But we do need somebody for the corporation. It is, it's kind of important because you want a voice at the table. Gordon can talk, because he's on the, the superintendents also meet as a group once a month with the collab, with director, executive director and the business manager. Like I said, it's not.
It's, how many times a year?
Four or five.
Four or five. It's not, not every month or nearly as involved as I am.
What about the Willie Ross? How often is that?
That is quarterly. So I think we do four.
Safe schools, how often is that?
Safe schools is generally once, yeah, as needed. You know, we kind of update where we are in the fall and then as needed.
Yep. Strategic planning, we haven't done much with that, right?
No. Because generally what we've gone to is our goal setting and professional development the last few falls.
Yep. And then policy review has some work to it.
Policy review, depending on, yeah, what's going on during a given school year, could have a decent amount of work.
Okay.
And it's exciting work.
It is.
I'll do the policy revision. I know, I like to get down to show with Bill. I wouldn't mind doing safe schools either. With Sarah.
Okay. I could do strategic planning because it never needs. But it'll be like 10 times a year, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So what we have left?
The Willie Ross?
Willie Ross is quarterly and then.
LPVC.
The collaborative.
And Willie Ross has changed quite a bit. It used to be much more discussion of the partnership and sort of programming in both, both sides. Really, now it's become an update just on sort of where Willie Ross is. So, I mean, that's, that's something that I think Ms. Margen Voucher was able to attend one or two the last couple of years. And so it's, it's not a situation where that's been.
Yeah.
You know, a bad.
A lot of work, critical.
Yeah. So, thank you. My words are failing me today.
I can do that.
Okay.
If you want. And then we just need the collaborative.
Bill, since you're very connected with the LPVC, do they come out with a schedule of meetings in September or is it just kind of happenstance?
No, because it's, it's whatever business because the, the corporation owns the buildings.
Right.
The board of directors controls everything. So if they're making acquisitions like this, they just met last week because there's, there were two bids that they had to approve. One is for elevators, the other one is for buses. So there's really no set schedule. It depends on what the business of, is, that's coming up. There are some critical things coming up that we're waiting for bids on, but I don't see the collabor, I don't see the corporation meeting anytime before, let's say, November or December.
So who would be contacted about the corporation? Would it be, was Beth contacted directly?
Yeah. They email, the, the executive secretary is in charge of scheduling the meetings and she emails everybody with what is going on.
And where do they meet?
In West Springfield. And Rochella, the old Miko building.
You want to split it, Sarah? If I can make it, fine. If I can't.
Yeah.
I want to put, but we'll, we'll settle that down for that. We'll split it.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
And I'll keep everybody up.
That's why, that's why I asked. You could tell, say, there's going to be a meeting next month.
Yeah. I'll get, I'll let them know. You know, we can let them know what's going on and.
You said that one is Wednesdays?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wednesdays are not a bad night for me.
Yeah. Depending on the month.
Right.
What?
Six o'clock.
What Wednesday usually?
Third Wednesday of the month.
Second, I can't do the third. Okay.
Yeah. But like I said, it's not, I think this, this past year, they only met three times.
Okay.
So it's not like, like I said, it's nowhere near the commitment I have to make.
Okay. Fine. Beautiful.
That's it? We have them all?
Yeah.
Correct? Yep. All right. So I will enter in a motion to approve the reorganization of subcommittees.
Do we have to update budget and finance or does that?
It's automatic.
I have.
Okay. Let's check.
Yeah. Thank you. You're right. To accept it as discussed. Motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Good morning, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And now the Chromebook insurance program for students.
Okay. So, in your informational packet, we've put together a somewhat of a self-insurance program, very similar to the one that we use for staff currently. And it is optional. People do not have to participate, but we are strongly encouraging their participation because what it will do is we'll protect against accidental damage. Should the Chromebook be dropped or damaged. Liquid sometimes, first year with staff with laptops, we had some liquid situations. Thankfully, that has sort of corrected itself. So now we're, I think, last year we had zero. This year we may have had one or two. But it's worked well in that, you know, putting in the $30, we're able to handle most repairs and be prepared to provide a new Chromebook if necessary.
And you said it's self-insured? We're going to actually hold the money and insure ourselves?
Yeah, we basically put it into revolving account.
We have a set revolving account for that?
Insurance.
Well, I think we'll need to create.
We'll have to create.
Three, eight, one?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the.
Because it's got to be separate from the other one.
Right. Exactly.
So it's a staff revolving.
So if it's unintentional, as that list shows, and cannot be replaced, the only cost to person $50 for the total loss. If I take out the insurance.
Yep.
It's unintentional, it can't be, it can't be fixed.
So in addition to the 30 for, you've got to get the 50, yes. So it's 80.
You've spent, we're going to, so what's the 30 for then?
30 is to set up the replacement, things like chargers, if they were, you know, do something with parts. Because sometimes if they can get, have the liquid spill fast enough, they can take certain things out, put certain things in.
I just think that's morally confusing to tell people that they're buying insurance, but if something goes catastrophic, then they have to pay us more. We can't just roll the number to ensure.
Do it for 80? This is the way we set it up with staff.
Because at the, at the $25, it's, or $30, well, it costs 25 because if you go more than one year, it's 25 each year. Then we're saying one in 10 will fail. I can't imagine more than one in 10 will fail, do we? Historically speaking.
So far, we have not, yeah.
And you said two out of how many?
Last year, we had, I think, two spills. The year before, we had zero spills.
How many are out? How many students have?
Oh, I'm sorry. Student, the Community Action Learning course, we had zero damage.
Yeah. But now you're going. No, but how many Chromebooks do we have out there and how many spills?
Roughly 50.
50. So two out of 50.
Spills are on the staff side.
Oh. With zero on the students?
From what I, from what was reported, yes. Zero on the students.
So how many staff have? Although they're more responsible, probably.
All, all teachers have laptops.
So where do we come up with the number of 30 and 25?
Ryan.
It's really Ryan doing some research around other districts.
With other districts.
Plus the 50, though? Other districts do that?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure Suffield.
It just seems like.
Our main template for this.
I don't foresee us ruining one in 10. So why the $50, I guess is my question.
He felt that if we can't repair it, that at least gives us a pool of money if we, we're going to have a surplus of machines in terms of handling. But if we go through that surplus, then it builds your, your ability to purchase more.
But won't the insurance money be that same thing? So if we take $25 from each student that's going to have a Chromebook, we're going to have, how much, Pam?
A lot.
A lot. $30,000.
That would be a lot.
Be $30,000.
Sitting in your account.
For replacement of units. That's why I'm asking why we need, because then that'll.
Well, you're only doing this six through eight. Right?
Six through 12.
Excuse, sorry. Thank you.
So six grades. How many students? 125 per grade, roughly?
200.
800. So you're talking 800 kids, times 25 is $4,000. 4,000? 4,000? Which one? How much do we have? 800 times 25.
800 times 25?
Yeah.
I don't know. Help me out, everybody.
What's more than 800? So we've got to do the high schools.
Six through 12.
Yeah. Yeah. Six through 12.
So 200 per class.
You have, you have about 810 in the high school. You have about 600 in.
Virtually 1400.
Yeah.
I pulled one up. 1400.
Times 25.
Times 25.
What about staff over there?
Oh, 1400.
Yeah, 1400 kids.
Yeah, 1400.
Wow.
35,000.
35 grand.
35 grand.
We don't need the 50 bucks.
Do you want us to remove that?
Because that's not, that's.
Yeah. We can, that's what we do now for staff. But if you feel.
Yeah, but we're going to have $35,000.
And revisit it.
I was just going to say.
How many, how many?
Yeah.
Go for an air and see what happens.
Go for a year and then we'll come, come back and look at it. At 35,000, we can replace 120 machines and still be in the green.
But let's, let's wait and see if there's, you know, if there's, if there's any damage in the, in any numbers.
In the green, I guess, if it's my analogy.
Let's, let's revisit it any year.
You make a very valid point.
Yeah. So, because with staff, obviously, you don't have that same, those same numbers.
I'm not super psyched about charging insurance to those that never asked for it in the first place, but it is worth it.
Well, they don't have to take it.
It's optional.
I know. But so we're providing an educational tool like we would anything else. And I guess if you had a textbook or something, you would have to repay it.
Yeah. If they lose it or damage it.
So there's that, too. And as long as people are aware upfront, that the placement is 250 or the 30 will cover it, then I think.
Well, yeah. I think you explain that, what the difference is. The either or.
What do you think about that? Without the 50, we'd be all right?
I like.
Well, I think it's right.
I like the idea of looking how it goes for this year and then possibly reintroducing it.
I mean, we can always adjust to 25 if it has to go to 30 or something because we find we fit. We've had to replace 150 machines.
Well, I mean.
I just don't think to buy insurance and then to tell me that I have to pay another $50 once I break it.
Well, remember with insurance, you always have a deductible. That's the, that's your deductible.
Yeah, I know. But this is a laptop or Chromebook.
I mean, if it gets crazy, if it gets crazy after the first of the year, we can, we can revisit it.
Because if they're almost paying for half the machine and just insurance. When I go to like Best Buy and such, I never get the insurance because I figure in the end I'm going to win. Because if I never buy the insurance, I'm going to win, right? Because the insurance company wins all the time. If you pay them, right? I'm just saying. We're going to charge them half the machine already.
Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a good example.
So we need some.
So you want to get rid of the 50 dollars?
So if you, whoever makes a motion to accept, just make in that motion the revision of taking out the total loss fee.
Yeah.
Is this a privilege or a right?
Chromebook?
It has a, how much?
If we are going one to one and expecting them to have it, then we will have to, similarly, what we can.
Can I refuse? Say, I have my own.
I suppose you could refuse.
I have my own laptop.
And then we would have to have that in the, the Chromebook in the room for the student to use, at least at school.
What about my own laptop?
Wasn't it about how Ryan was, you know, IT is going to set up the Chromebook, too, with like.
May not be compatible.
Applications.
Exactly.
So you would have to not have your own laptop.
Okay.
You'd have to have your own Chromebook.
I know it's all a work in progress.
Because you also have an extended firewall and protections that, for the first time, will actually leave ELPS. So it's still going to be on their machine as they leave.
Wow. Okay. At the end of the four years, they give it back, the Chromebook?
Each summer.
Or summer?
Each summer, they give it back.
And do they get a different one? Doesn't matter? We don't know.
We're not sure exactly how that works, but they're going to go through, maintain them and then if they can, they'll probably give you back the same one.
Yeah, they should, because then you're even more responsible, I think.
Right.
And then what about covers? We're not providing.
We are at the middle level. The middle level, we're providing covers.
Front and back?
The whole machine goes in, yeah.
It's like a case.
Oh, after you just slide it in?
It's a case, yeah.
That makes sense.
How much are those?
I'm trying to remember the price on those. Well, I know it was about $11,000 for what was purchased.
For two grades?
Three.
Three grades, six, seven, eight.
Correct.
11,000. So 3500 is 30 bucks a piece.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, sounds right. 20 to 30.
This is what, towards the end, is just the process of solid claim within this program is, is there like a form, report the damage IT department? Is there a form?
So the IT department may have a damage. I don't have that form.
No, but about.
Yeah, I would assume that.
Okay.
Generally, what it's been, it's been a work order for the staff.
Okay.
So they do IT work order or they may issue the work order after they've run panicked into the IT room.
Pam, I'm sorry.
Obviously at the high school level, especially with the reporting of the damage, could that be funneled through Mr. Zilch?
I could. Actually, we're also going to have student IT help desk volunteers and so it might be funneled through them.
Okay, just trying to think how.
Yeah, just to keep.
Kids are going to get access to.
So that they're not constantly pulling the technicians away. The technicians are actually working with machines.
Wow.
It is, and I'm sure that it'll probably start off as a certain, and then it's probably going to change as time goes on, we find better ways to do things. Or I will tell you that the business office will partner with IT regarding, and actually at the high school, just similar to how they collect for, by parking, you know.
Parking stickers.
Exactly, so that, you know, the money will all come down here to business office and we'll be depositing it. So I, I will need you to, you know, vote to.
In the August meeting.
Yeah, okay, so we can vote now?
What?
Do we vote now for them to allow me to open up a, create a revolving account?
Are they going to have to pay before they get the unit?
I'm sorry.
Do they ever have to pay the insurance before we hand them the unit?
No, because the insurance is not mandatory, it's optional.
They have to sign off on that they're protecting it and they've read the guidelines for protection and so forth.
But is there a shutout, closeout time before they have to sign up for the insurance buy?
We haven't set.
What you don't want is to say, you know, January where you break it by the insurance, because nobody's going to buy the insurance.
So we'll set a date in the information lines.
Yeah, that's a good point. We'll break that to.
And then, why not covers for the rest of them?
We didn't think that the.
We actually.
We, we took students and asked them, you know, which, we had like four samples of the covers. And the high school students were not enamored with any of the covers.
Right, they, they said honestly, I don't think we really use it.
So they, they are going to be keeping it in their backpacks. We felt that, given that the community action learning group has had no damage to date, we're hoping that that's going to carry over when it goes to the whole school.
But I don't want to see us investing in covers and they don't use them either.
Well, but I'd rather invest in covers and then, but if they're not.
We did our best. Yeah, I know, but we're doing our best now, I think. You can only be so.
Well, I mean, based on the, I mean, granted, it's only 50 students. We haven't had any damage, so kind of going with them being the more responsible students that've gotten to high school.
Going back to what I said originally, let's look at it a year. If there's, if there's, if things warrant, then we can change. We can change the way we're just, what we're requiring here too. So let's just, let's get it out there and see what happens.
And I think in this day and age, students are pretty, they're pretty good with their technology. It's important to them. I think they're probably going to be.
Well, how many kids you see with cracked screens on the phones though? All of them, yeah. Most of them, right? That's all.
Yeah.
Because that would be another 40, how much for the?
It's about 11.
There were like 20 to 30 dollars.
So another 40,000 if we went to the high school?
Right.
I don't know. Okay.
Your original 300,000 estimate did not include covers for the high school.
Yeah.
Since the middle school has the covers, if it's.
Middle school, we're purchasing the covers.
Covers, so since they have them, if they purchase the insurance and the child opts out of using the cover and that's what causes the damage.
If they opt out of using the cover, then they may be, if they can't replace it.
No, I think we cover it and we cover.
We cover the liquid damage because the cover's really not going to protect.
If we purchase you a cover and you're not, and you're choosing not to use it.
Yeah, there's going to be some, some interesting situations that we're going to have to work through.
Being.
Because if they damage it, they're going to throw it in the cover and they're going to say, look, I was using the cover. There's really no way around any of this because of it happens.
That's what I mean. It would be kind of arbitrary to.
No, I'm just making it.
Yeah, I think it's broken, it's broken.
Like being really clear, like this was purchased for you to ensure the safety, our expectations that you have it on.
Yeah, but how do we say that to middle schoolers and not give them to high schools? How do we say that to them? How can you hold them to that? We know that if you don't use this cover, it might break and we won't cover you, but we're going to give it to every high school student without a cover.
Because you're, they're more responsible.
I don't think we talk about covers anymore.
No.
I get your point, but without buying them for everybody, I don't think we can emphasize that you have to use it.
No, we can't.
Because then we're not putting the same responsibility.
I think they're, they're going to be emphasizing to use it to protect it.
I think they should, and that's why I'm thinking that all.
Well, you know what, you know what you can do? You can make it an option. If you wish, if you wish to purchase a cover in, at the high school level, here's how we can do it. Make it an option.
Yeah.
Is the store open still in the high school? Is it in the store? No, it's not.
No.
But, you know, I'm sure we can get.
This is coming all through IT.
Right, but I'm sure.
No, I know, but Bill's talking about buying them separately to provide them.
I mean, we can, as we make purchases, we can get extra covers to provide that option.
Because I think there will be something that will.
810 covers or 820 covers.
I'm sure that some of them will say, yeah, I think it's a good idea. There's only one way to find out.
Yeah, it's, you have to keep us in touch. It's going to be probably interesting. I mean, after all the.
We have gone back and forth as we were preparing the estimate and given the track record of the community action learning students, we said, okay, well, why don't we hold off, given that there's somewhat resistance to putting covers on them anyway, or at least when we started to advertise it. And we felt that as students are learning to be responsible for these items in the middle school, that maybe the cover was wise, at least in year one.
You're just going to have to muddle through it and see what happens.
Looks like Ryan Quinich will become our best friend, huh?
Yeah.
Or our worst friend.
Our worst friend.
He's always one of our best friends.
Yeah, I know, but.
Although he is the one that came up with that $50 deductible amount, so.
I think that's going to be on us then to figure that out.
Right.
Yeah, but it's our funding mechanism. We're the ones who are self-insuring. It's not on IT, it's on the school department.
Right, but he came up with that probably because, for, for reasons, I'm a little.
It's kind of from.
It seems arbitrary though, because the machine costs 250, what's the 50?
What was the other town we were looking at? I think it was Suffield and maybe Natick.
Yeah, I know, it was Suffield.
Yeah, Natick.
Okay.
I'd rather go to $30 a year and then not do the extra 50. I just think it's going to be problematic to say, I bought all this insurance to cover it.
And I still have to pay?
And now I have to pay? Doesn't make any sense. We might as well just charge people at 250 and not offer insurance. I don't know.
Well, I suppose if it starts going the other direction, then we'll come.
Because you raise, I think.
The school committee may be.
Basically, you're selling them the laptop. On the self-insurance though, you raise the, well, I don't know, because then there's a penalty to actually ruining the machine too.
Right.
Well, that was part of us, so.
We also have to see how many people actually opt into the insurance program.
Right.
Well, yeah, that's the other thing.
There's a lot of question marks here.
There's five people who opt in and.
I mean, everybody may look at this and go, yeah, right, I'll just take my chances.
Right.
That's probably, that, you know, these are, you're talking about high school.
So who developed this?
This is, it was a combination of Ryan's work, the principal's work, our work, based on the research that we've done. Predominantly it was Suffield and Natick because they've had programs that have been in place and they offer insurance. But we've also been up to Gateway because they've had a long time one-to-one program. And so we're trying to take their best practices.
So I, I've had an epiphany about the 50 though. Maybe we should keep it because it is a deterrent perhaps.
Which is, yeah, I, I'm with you. I feel like if this has been researched and I feel like we should start with this and back to Bill's point, it's a work in progress. If something comes up, we can back.
We saw it sort of, not only have we seen it in other policies, but we also saw it as that deductible, you know? You pay your insurance monthly, but you still have a deductible before you can.
Add into all benefits.
Okay.
Yeah. So keep it as is?
Yeah.
Well, and to everybody's credit, there was a lot of research done. It's not just, we'll throw this together and put it out there.
Yes, yeah.
A lot of people weighed in on this.
So this will be the, or it's not even a policy, what is it?
It's insurance program.
We're going to have the parent and the student sign off on it?
Parent and student are signing off on accepting the laptop. If they take this, yes, then we would issue another.
Well, I'm just saying if they, if we're requiring the 50, we should have a sign off at least by the parent when they sign up for the insurance.
Exactly, yeah.
That's the way they.
We can add it to the.
Yeah, they fully understand the.
Yes, right.
We can add that to the.
No surprises. And then at parent nights, the staff can go over it too. Is that our plan?
Yeah.
It is the plan.
Are there extra computers in the building if a student does forget?
Our plan is to have.
Computer.
An extra, maybe even more than we originally planned because the school committee had voted prior to getting the capital money designated at the final budget from the town. They voted to use a curriculum renewal. And so our plan now is that can set us up pretty well with having surplus computers for that as well as making sure that we have professional development covered. And one thing that is pretty constant is there's always need for new chargers.
Yeah. Oh, so how are we going to deal with that? Those are covered under the optional insurance?
Yeah.
Yes.
But not otherwise?
$30 otherwise.
Not the $30 otherwise.
Is it in there?
Yeah, right at the very bottom.
Right at the bus?
Should have run.
I mean, it's all light out, so let's try it, I guess, right?
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the Eastland Middle Public Schools optional Chromebook insurance program for the 2019, 2020 school year.
Okay, motion's been made. Seconded and seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. You want a revolving account?
I do.
So we need a motion in that regard?
Yeah.
A revolving account for insurance or.
I make the motion to approve a revolving account for the Eastland Middle Public Schools optional Chromebook insurance program.
Great, motion made. Seconded and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. That'll let me set it up over the summer.
When, when are the Chromebooks going to be available for students?
Technically, today is the first day we can put the purchase out there. So we're hoping to get them in the last two weeks of July if possible.
Oh, nice. And then IT will take them, set them up?
Start distributing them, yeah. They've collected all the Chromebooks from all the buildings.